Do the pledge, so we just do our roll call attendance. Deborah Koval here, and again, as we've said, I say every time, public meeting, bless you. Anybody is welcome to attend and be here, but we just let people know who's in the room with us. So I am alone. Karen?
I'm here and I'm alone.
Soheini?
I'm here and I'm alone.
Janet?
I am here and I'm alone.
Janice?
I'm here and I'm alone.
And Yvette?
Erin, I'm alone.
Okay, so great, let's stand and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Before we get started, I'd just like to share some correspondence that the board received. I received a thank you card from Joanne Marston, and she wrote, "Please share this note of thanks with the other library trustees. I so appreciate your generous gift recognizing my 20-year gulp anniversary working at MPL. I love what a library does for its community and am honored to be part of an organization that provides so much to my neighbors. I will strive to keep working hard and maintain the high level of service for which our library is known. Thank you all for your kind words and generous gift." Joanne Marston. So, that was lovely, and I just wanted to share that with you. And we also have a staff anniversary to recognize. So it is the five, five-year, correct, Yvette? And let me see, that is four, for Susan McGowan. So congratulations to Susan. We appreciate all that she has done for the library. It's always lovely to see her at the desk. In fact, she just told me this weekend, so it's, her hard work is greatly appreciated. Is there anything anyone else would like to say? Okay, well, we wish Susan the best, and we thank her for her five years of service to the Merrick Public Library. So, all right, moving on to old business. So the first thing on our agenda was the holiday schedule for 2021. So I believe that the one issue that we were trying to decide was whether the library should be closed on Juneteenth or not. So I'm wondering if anybody has any thoughts, any ideas, where, did you give us any more thought? Is there anything you'd like to bring to the table to add to our discussion?
I went through and I saw where the governor had proclaimed it a state holiday. I wasn't sure that I saw that our state actually, you know, like our workplaces actually take that holiday off, but I do know that it was, was proclaimed a state holiday. The only thing I wondered was, that makes 17 days that the library's closed. I don't know, it's only one more day than seems like typical.
Okay. Thank you, Janice. Are there any other thoughts or questions about anything involving the holiday schedule? I'm not really sure how the board feels about this, I'll be honest. So I don't know if I should put forth that, do we accept the holiday schedule? Or if you'd like to discuss if you think this is a good idea to have this on here or not? Like, I'm open to your opinions. If people think no, then we can put forth the holiday schedule and vote on it with or without. So this is our time to have that discussion?
Yvette, is that, is that, that timing for that particular day helpful as far as scheduling the staff and so on? And is the library going to have some kind of a, maybe, display? Or, or, or some, some reading materials or something that would publicize the holiday so that people would be aware beforehand, maybe? What was that, that the library was going to be closed in celebration of this?
Well, we haven't talked about perming that far out. I know, you know, if you, if you think about this in the, in a bigger context, you know, we're doing, okay, let me start at the beginning. If you think about it in a bigger context, the NHLA, along with the ALA, so American Library Association, NHLA is our state library association. All of the other state library associations in the country have all made a statement. They've all made an anti-racism statement. You know, we have a Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee that I'm part of. I'm also part of the ALA EDI Committee. And so I think for libraries, this, you know, acknowledging something like Juneteenth is a totally new idea. When I shared with my, with our local EDI committee, I said, hey, I brought this to my board, and, and they were kind of like, huh. You know, they were like, oh, let's get everyone else to do it. And I'm like, you know, we didn't, we are not doing it yet. So, you know, I think that even the committee, you know, the committee is acknowledging this is a new idea. What the NHLA and ALA are committed to is, you know, moving the dial, starting conversations about the inequities that are in, in all of our systems and the library system included. You know, so, you know, on our local committee, we're, we are still planning out a series of events for 2021, you know, and we're still putting together a resource page so that our staff in our various New Hampshire libraries can learn about the problem. You know, you, you have to acknowledge that there's a problem before you can address, how do we fix this? You know, so it is very new. I mean, I, I think for me, it's what kind of actions can we take? You know, in the context of the bigger thing. Does having an acknowledgement of Juneteenth in Merrick, does it make or break it? No, you know, but it seems like an easy, something to put out there. So, you know, we, we normally do displays for Black History Month or LGBT, you know, month or something. There's debate within the library field about, should we designate February for Black History Month and not talk about it at all the rest of the year? No, you know, if you really want to, if you really want to act on inclusion or act on diversity, it has to just be part of the regular conversation and not just relegated to a day, a month. You know, so that's kind of a bigger, bigger picture and more of a philosophical question that, you know, certainly as a library director, I would think about. But I think, you know, in practical terms, G-MILX is asking for all the library's holiday schedules so they can put it into Polaris so we know what the due dates are going to be, because everything shifts with holidays. So I think, you know, if you're not quite sold on this thing, then I would, I would remove it. I would recommend that you remove it. And then, you know, along with the rest of us, keep learning about it. You know, that would be probably the most prudent thing to do.
I wonder about, I understand, I completely understand the idea of not, you know, it's Native American National Heritage Month, and I tell my students, we're taking a pause, and we're doing this, but we do this all the time, right? It's just another, but we still, you know, reflect on it. We're going to be reading stories from other cultures throughout. I still think that even with that philosophical debate, if you have five people sitting here who are all library users and people who are interested and invested in growing intellectually and want to learn more, and we still are not sure about everything that this holiday encompasses, I'm sure there are lots of people out there like us who want to know more and just don't, you know, don't, it's not part of their normal routine, what they encounter. So having those items available and maybe calling attention to the day in some way to start that education is good for all of us, you know, and is a step in the right direction. So, yeah, any other thoughts before we vote on this? Very quiet, okay. It's like, you know, I think that we need to acknowledge that when we are discussing things that deal with race and racism and anti-racism, that it can be an uncomfortable conversation, and then that's part, something that we need to be talking about. And that's why we need to be talking about these holidays and recognizing these holidays and questioning our own assumptions about things. So I'll get off my soapbox now and say, Janice, go ahead.
I guess I'm confused about what you're trying to say, in giving the example of you're working with your students on Native American.
For Native American, so I was just using an analogy that it's National Native American Heritage Month. So of course, we read some stories about that, but we always tell them, this isn't the only time we're reading these. This isn't the only time we explore, you know, other cultures, because Thanksgiving is coming up. We do this throughout. And so to Yvette's point that we don't just say, we're only going to talk about Black History in February, is not helpful. We want to be talking about different people's histories and cultures throughout the year and not just saying, this is the only month we focus on that. That's all.
So in terms of having this as a holiday, is that, or is that not turning a focus on, on the issue?
And then I was continuing that, despite that, I think that we are, we need more education on this particular holiday and topic, and that we can still use it as a focus, even if we don't take the day off, that we should, you know, libraries are always making it their mission to expand people's horizons, right, and do that sort of thing. So I'm getting the sense from the board that it would be good to just put forth the holiday schedule for 2021 and to remove Juneteenth from that schedule right now so that we can move forward with this. So I will make a motion that, Janice, go ahead.
In our exploration, can we revisit this in the next holiday schedule?
Yeah, of course, I think that's part of the process, right? Things get introduced, and they're new and unknown, and we live with them, and we think about them, and we see them in our culture more, in our news, and then it starts to become a more accepted idea and more understood. So I think that's completely appropriate, if it becomes part of the discussion again for the holiday schedule 2022, so.
So this is a very far-reaching action item, but would we, would we put that in as an action item? So before we are on top of.
I feel like Yvette's going to remember, but if you want.
That's what I'm asking, I'm asking sort of.
When it comes time for October, you know, next October, when I put the, you know, Dwayne and I put the list together, you know, you know, then it, it'll, it'll probably be on there. I think, I mean, I'll, I have to say probably also that I live in this world of anti-racism. I've been studying a lot, like, I've been in this world since June, you know, and doing a lot of study and research and thinking and going to workshops and listening and hearing from people. And, you know, one of the things that people who are, you know, writers of color who address these issues say upfront is, be prepared to get uncomfortable. You know, because this is probably not your paradigm, you know, this is not your background, this is not what you have to deal with every day. And so, you know, I am probably 10 months ahead of you guys, you know, or whatever it is, which is fine, because I'm your library director and I should be a little ahead of you guys so that I can say, what's on the horizon, you know? And what should we be thinking about? I'm, I'm assuming or guessing or forecasting that come around, you know, next June, this coming June, is it going to be a hot topic again, or are we forgetting about it? You know, I mean, that's another kind of bigger discussion that communities need to have. But it's definitely, you know, the library world, the professional library world, we're digging in and we are scrutinizing everything, scrutinizing the systems to see where is the inequity. So, you know, I, you know, be on the lookout for it. I can recommend many good books to, about it if you want, or listen to, because they're all audiobooks.
I did on audio, that's how I listened to how the Abraham, I'm not going to say it.
Professor Ken.
Yes, go ahead, Karen, what did you want to say?
I was just thinking that I don't know if having the library closed as a holiday when you're introducing something new will resonate with patrons. At least until they get more familiar with what the holiday is about. I just, I just don't know if, if, you know, it's a question of which comes first, the chicken or the egg, you know? And so I was just trying to balance it with, what would the town's perception be? And, and that's why I thought maybe doing some upfront education prior to that, taking that day, so that people were more aware. That's, that's essentially why I suggested that, that's all.
That's fine, and Yvette, thank you for bringing this to us. I mean, these are things that we need to be thinking about and, you know, reflecting on. Soheini, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just following up on, expanding on Karen's proposal of educating people, like, having, like, celebrating that day with giving, like, you know, having somebody come and talk if, after COVID kind of permits, to have something or just, you know, how we had that talk about Islam, you know, the same way.
Wonderful.
Can have somebody come and talk, you know, people can engage themselves, maybe in person and over the web together, like, those who cannot attend, you know? Like, they can listen over the phone at least, you know, while they're driving, things like that. And have, like, you know, literature up and do, like, kind of, not only that day, the day before and the day after, like, because if it's in a weekend, do it on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, spread it out, so, you know, people usually come in the weekends. So in that way, just closing the library and giving it a holiday, we are celebrating. People will think it's just another holiday. So it's just, you know, we are getting a holiday. The word doesn't go out. I think the first, I agree with Karen. I think we should have more talks about a lot of things, and that should come from the library. And I think we should have all these discussions coming more, because that only pays the way for the next, not only our generation, but the generations to come to enrich themselves and take, like, you know, the library's motto forward of education, of getting closer to people. I think, I think a lot of youngsters will also, I think we should have something for the young children also if their guardians permit, like, the teenagers or college-going kids, if they want to participate, or they can come up with some ideas, or they can have, like, a writing contest, something like that, you know, which will at least engage youngsters to think about it. So I would suggest doing something for that day, like we do for the other days also. I think that the best way is to have, like, a writing competition or something like that, you know? Like, everybody gets a certificate for writing, but they get used to, like, what they want to write. And I would say, like, the teenagers and the college-going kids, they may have a lot of things to say about it.
It'd be like, oh, yeah, we know all about this, they're, like, way ahead of us, that's my opinion. But I'm going to, to move it forward, I appreciate everybody's comments and suggestions, and it sounds like I'm going to make a motion then that we accept the holiday schedule with the removal of Juneteenth for the year 2021. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Karen. So all in favor? We have to do a roll call, so I will say yes. Janice?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Soheini?
Yes.
And Yvette, really, thank you for bringing this before us. It's, it's definitely worth our concentration, our study and our thoughts on it, and I hope you will bring it before us again in 2022, when we have had.
You tell me. Seconded again?
Me.
Karen?
Thank you.
Now we need to catch up with Yvette. Okay, the next thing, she says she's 10 months ahead of us, so we got some work to do. The life, the library conceptual design study is just on there as a placeholder, because it's ongoing. This contract is over, so that's where we are right there. Is there anything else that's come forward, Yvette, that needs to be addressed?
No.
Okay. And then October's action items. We did really well in October. I think we did a great job being organized and getting through the budget process in October into November. So the discussion, review of October action items, we had the discussion of Juneteenth, which was to be tonight, and we did that, I'm sorry, of adding Juneteenth to the library holiday schedule. The next one was that the library director was going to contact the town to determine if we can consult town attorney. They said regarding the rescinding of the letter of employment, which stipulates three-year period and return to the original letter of employment, they said that we can, we will have to pay for it, and, and I need to contact them. Is that correct, Yvette? Is that what you got from that email? So, yes, we can, we would have to pay for it, and, yes, so I get.
Who would have to pay who?
The library trustees would have to pay for the town attorney's time.
Okay.
I, I, I think it's the town, our municipal budget.
Oh, okay.
Paul would see it.
Okay.
I think also it occurred to me, Deb, I can send you, or I should send you or leave a copy for you of my original hire letter and then these change, the change letter, just so you have the documents to look at.
Okay, thank you. I think you might have, when I initially contacted the New Hampshire Municipal Association, but it's always nice to have it hop right up to the top of your inbox, so thank you. So I don't know that we, do we need to take a vote on that? I'll ask our money manager, Janet, since they'll be coming out of the municipal funds, would we need to take a vote on that, or is that just something that is all set?
Um, it's a good question. I guess just to cover it, let's just vote on it. It's always better to just vote on it, so the board knows it's documented, but, sure.
So then I will make a motion that we pay the, now, clarify for me, the town attorney, we have Matt Upton, but we also have another attorney, this is.
This is the firm.
Okay, so this would be to the, the firm, we'd be speaking to an employee, I would be speaking to an employment lawyer. Okay, so that we pay the town attorney for a consultation on changing Yvette's letter of employment from the three-year period back to the original terms. Do I have a second? Karen, you're my second tonight, Karen seconds, okay? So I'm going to say, I'm going to, Janice, you look like, do you have a question about it?
Yeah, these motions get so long that I sometimes just can't keep track of them.
Okay. All right, so this was just a motion that we would, that the, we would pay for a consultation with the town attorney, and by we, it would come out of municipal funds regarding a change of Yvette's, the director's, letter of employment.
That part I have.
Okay, from the three-year period.
Beginning was what I didn't have.
So we, I think we just really want to make it stated that we have, we have approved it and that it will be coming from municipal funds, so there's not a question when we look back on that. So, and Karen seconded, so, so I'm going to vote in favor. Janice?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Soheini?
Yes.
Okay, so that's great. Um, let's see, the next one was setting a meeting to review proposed library budget. We've done all of that. The library director and me are going to meet with the town council. That's actually this Thursday. Yvette has sent me the document she'll be working from, and I'm going to look at it in detail tomorrow. So you are all welcome to attend the town council meeting with us if you would like to, or you can just watch from the comfort of your homes. Karen?
Yeah, is this going to be a Zoom meeting, or is this in person?
It's in person.
At the courtroom?
Mm-hmm.
Thursday?
Yes.
At seven or so, is it?
Or so, yes. The meeting begins at seven, we are, I think, third or fourth down, so it will be. But, you know, and they move us around if they need to, which is fine, so.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
I'm headed away for the weekend, so I won't be there.
That's fine, yeah, no, it's, and you know, if people, there's, still, we're dealing with different comfort levels. If people would prefer to watch from home, we'll know you're supporting us in your own way, so.
Is there going to be a Zoom connection that people can, can, that's been publicized?
I don't know if there will be a Zoom, they probably broadcast it on the government TV, though, don't they?
Yeah, they do, maybe.
They don't have a Zoom included in the agenda.
Yeah, probably just the live stream on government TV, so. And then there is the additional quote on the purchase of masks, which RFA got for us, which is considerably different, the Janeway quote versus the one that we received initially. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to take a look at this and see. Does everybody have the quote in front of them?
It's like a, it's, one is 100 masks, I think.
Yes.
And the other is like, like 30, so it's like $12 a mask or something.
Do they make one ahead of time, Yvette, for you to approve of?
Um, I don't know. I know when we've ordered, we ordered, I think we ordered the shirts, collared golf shirts from them, and we just got the shirt, not the imprint on the shirt.
Oh, they just said, you could see the quality of it before that? Okay, so do people want to, go ahead?
That up charge, like, the part where they design it?
The setup charge.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yep. So, you know, we have been talking about getting them for staff. This would obviously be a lot more than we would need if we were to do this purchase of 100, but do we get them and then use them to also give to library supporters, like the friends of the library, who, and, you know, people who have, who are library supporters? So I don't know, that's part of the question. And we don't have to make a decision about this today, but RFA did get us the quote, so I just wanted to mention that this was taken care of as part of our action items, so.
I just wanted to say, I also thought about giving them to add the library supporters, or for that matter, the public.
So why don't we just, like, put this off to the side and continue on with the rest of our business? And we can, I think it comes up again in Yvette's director's report. So let's, rather than get bogged down in this discussion where we have a lot of other things on our agenda, we'll just place it over to the side and move on from the action items, if that's okay with everyone, so. Okay, we have a lot of policies to go through, we have new business. Yvette, staff was busy with many, many policies. Yvette, which one would you like us to look at first?
Um, I don't know.
Okay, I've got notary public first, let's do that, so. Was there anything specific that you wanted to bring to our attention, or was this just?
Can I just jump in? Okay, in this particular policy, and for me, the other policies, I didn't see anything that I thought needed to be changed.
I agree, I didn't find anything that I thought needed anything.
Me too.
It seemed like they were just minor little corrections, kind of, these policies would be pretty standard.
Okay, so you, you are, the board reviews the policies annually, so however long it takes us to get through a year's worth of policies. Wow.
I have something on the policy for the notary. One thing where certain public documents cannot be copied or notarized, it says. So you give examples of birth certificate, death certificates, marriage. So you give examples of birth certificate, death certificates, marriage certificate, and also the naturalization certificates. You cannot notarize that. If you want to add that. Because I went through it, I know.
Interesting.
Even you cannot copy your naturalization certificate, it's not accepted.
Does anybody else have any issues with the notary? I make a motion to accept the notary public policy with the addition of the naturalization certificate. I guess, to accept it.
I'll second.
Deb? She's not here.
I'm looking at Rome, she's not there yet. Yeah. Okay.
Her Comcast just crashed, trying to get back on.
Oh, yuck.
Um. Okay.
Yvette, do you mind forwarding me a copy of that, so I make sure I document correctly what's, what's being added? Thanks.
She just texted me and said, please move forward with the policies, it's fine. So, um.
We take a moment?
I made a motion, Karen seconded, and we need to make, do a roll call vote. So, I say yes. Karen?
I say yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Soheeny?
Yes, were the changes incorporated?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move on to the next policy.
The proctoring?
The proctoring. That one seemed pretty straightforward to me, too.
Yep, me too.
I agree.
Yeah.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move, we accept the proctoring policy as written.
I'll second. Roll call vote, I say yes. Soheeny?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Okay.
And what was the other one? I don't, there was another one, wasn't there?
Sorry.
There's a, yeah, Library Board of Trustees Policy and Guidelines for Public Internet Access.
Deb? Yeah, back. Yeah, sorry about that. We have two networks, they both went down, Comcast was not working at all for some reason, so here we are, but welcome to the new reality, right? So where are we at? Did you get, do the notary public policy?
Yes, and the proctoring.
Awesome, okay, so we are on to the policy guidelines for public internet access. Yes. Thank you.
That's okay.
So is there anything of note, Yvette, anything that you wanted to bring to our attention? Looks like it makes sense. Does anyone have any comments, questions? Can you hear me?
Yes.
This policy, for me anyways, was pretty cut and dry, it wasn't a lot of changes, I don't know what Soheeny mentioned about the notary public policy.
Okay, would you like to make a motion that we accept this policy, then?
Sure, I will make a motion that we accept the, let me see if I can say it right. Policy and guidelines for public internet access.
I'll second. Thank you, Janet. So I will vote yes. Karen?
Yes.
Soheeny?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
Yes.
Thank you. I asked Yvette to put trustee bylaws on here, not because we're going to do that tonight, but because it does need to be done every two years, and we need to do that. One of the things that we had talked about at our retreat in the fall was maybe meeting again in January to kind of see how things were going, so I'd like this to just be on there for right now, so it doesn't fall to the wayside, and we try to get to it in the next, you know, few months, once we get through the holidays and whatnot. So, does anyone have any concerns, questions, thoughts about the bylaws?
I was just glad we caught that, because I thought we were due.
I know, I was glad Janet caught that also, so that was on Janet, she, so thank you, Janet. So, okay, staff holiday plans. Soheeny, in the past, the trustees, well, I can only speak to last year, gave gift cards to the staff and made a breakfast. Obviously, that's gonna look very different this year, so we wanted to talk about it and make a decision on how we are going to handle our acknowledgement of the staff this year. We just did the food, the snacks and whatnot, so I don't know if we want to do another food thing, or if we want to focus more heavily on gift cards this year, because who doesn't love a good gift card, so. You know, thoughts, discussion, I welcome your ideas.
Gift cards, is it, it is, I think. It's always appreciated.
Yeah, what were the gift cards last year? Were they $10?
$25.
$25 for every staff member?
Yes. Yep.
So I think we should do that again.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Especially, I think, oh, everybody would appreciate a Starbucks or a Dunkin' Donuts, I think, so, for morning coffee.
Yeah, I don't, I think that, do you, Yvette finds out usually kind of what people want, right? And gives us, because some, some people like their Michaels, or their, you know, the Amazon, and whatnot, so. All right, so, why don't we start with that? So, go ahead, Janice.
Well, I don't know, just, I'm just thinking, we would normally, well, we have traditionally done a breakfast. Would it make sense to, everyone has a gift card that is something they would like, but what if across the board, we have a $5 Buckley's Bakery gift card, or a $10 Buckley's Bakery gift card? Because we're not doing, I presume we're not doing a breakfast.
Yeah, I don't think we're doing a breakfast, so, but we, I guess the difference is that we, we did the breakfast, so I don't know if the, there's budget in there for giving everybody an additional gift card on top of the 25, so.
Didn't we, didn't we take money out of, didn't the trustees pay for, or reimburse people for things they needed for that breakfast?
No, yes.
Really? I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Oh, man! Okay, so I was not aware of that.
I wasn't either the first time I was on the board.
Oh, that's the way it works, okay. I feel hazed, okay, so what, so.
Just say to her that as an idea, that's.
Okay, no, it's, I mean, I love.
Or do we do, like, a breakfast snacks kind of appreciation?
You know what? If, since you brought that, we could, we could. It would be smaller, but we could cater breakfast. Buckley's has breakfast.
So what do you mean by cater breakfast?
Well, doesn't.
Individual, small packages?
Well, I know, I know Buckley's does, like, and I'm not sticking with Buckley's, I'm just using them as an example. They, like, wrap things up in individual things, and it could be picked up and just brought to the library. I mean, the thing is, I don't, I'm not comfortable sitting in, like, the clump room with all the staff and with all of us, with all the food, like, but I think we should do something, so.
I think it's, it makes people uncomfortable to eat food where they don't, when they don't know what the precautions were that took place, like, so, I think a restaurant is probably the best place to have something done like that and delivered, so. Okay, so Buckley's, we have the option, we have the bagel place.
Bagels, yep, yep.
So do we do Buckley's and they can, and do individual muffins, or just something like that, versus like a hot breakfast, or what are you thinking?
I don't know. I was thinking, I mean, I guess I was thinking more like pastries, bagels, but that's not, it's not very nutritious.
Holidays, it's a treat.
I know, but I'm sure there's some people that.
Blueberry muffins, okay, there's blueberries in it, so.
Juice is available.
Yeah, I like, oh, of course, I like their blueberry muffins grilled with butter, which does not make them very good for you, so, but.
Hawaii muffins.
What's that? Are we gonna say the same thing, Yvette? Grilled, so good, so, and they do a great job there with that. Want to do, Janice, do you like the idea of the gift card better, or do you want, do you think this is a good idea? What are you thinking?
Well, I'm wondering what the cost would be for purchasing all of the food versus you get a gift card and you pick what you want. I'm not in favor, I like the idea of them actually having a tangible item of food in the library. I just didn't know if, how comfortable or uncomfortable people might be, even if it's wrapped and individually delivered, and you tell us if it, seems like the snacks went over, I think.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, I need to clean that up, because it's almost empty.
I always worry about the people who don't work a morning shift.
Right, because we're not telling everybody to gather for food like we normally would, right, so.
Well, Yvette, how many, how many staff members are there? Is it 22, 21?
Right now, we have openings, so. I, I can return to the spreadsheet from, from last year, you know. Usually I have the spreadsheet and I have, like, for the gift cards, it's, you know.
Well, Janice.
Customers and staff.
In terms of cost, Janice?
Yeah.
It's, it's less if we just do a $10 gift card. If we did their typical $25 gift card, and then that, an additional $10 gift card, let's say specifically to Buckley's, it would be less than catered, or.
Have a breakfast treat on us, or something like that, which obviously they don't have to use it for that, but like, acknowledging that we would normally do breakfast, but, you know, during this year, we invite you to have a breakfast treat, you know, or on us, or something like that, we can make it look nice. We can still make the pack, like, a little package that looks lovely with the two gift cards in it. Make something nice for people, with a card.
Right.
Thank you for talking, because you all look frozen to me again. Okay, so then, I want to make a motion, we're very, like, very staged today. So then, it sounds to me like there is the idea of a $25 gift card of the staff's choice that they would get, and then everybody would also get a $10 gift card to Buckley's for a breakfast coffee treat of their choice, or pastry, whatever. You know, there's nothing wrong with having any Claire for breakfast, right? So, we would like, so, it's like a donut, okay?
It all starts next week with Thanksgiving, so.
That's right, so, does that sound, does anybody have any concerns about that, or does that sound like a good idea?
I would like, I, I just, my brain is not mathematically inclined at the moment. For $25 gift certificates for everybody, and $10 breakfast cards for everybody, what's that gonna cost?
About $700.
Don't we usually allot like 600?
Well, yeah, we usually say for the breakfast, yeah.
I mean, so, I did 20 people, so.
Probably a couple more.
So, well, I think fully staffed is only 22.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe 23 now with the reference person, so.
Well, $700.
Yeah, but, but I think that it's appropriate. We, we've always done the $25 one, we want to acknowledge the staff, a breakfast is not something any of us are really comfortable with. To Janice's point that not everybody's in in the morning, and we certainly don't want to say, come, everybody, come on down at the same time for breakfast, that kind of goes against what we're trying to do, so. So I will make a motion that we spend $25 on individual gift cards for the staff to a place of their choice, and a $10 gift card for each staff member to Buckley's Bakery.
I'll second.
Can't hear you, we cannot hear you.
I vote yes. Karen, your vote?
Oh, yes.
Soheeny?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you for those great ideas. And then we have the statistics.
Oh, yes, statistics. They were strange.
They were strange.
Yeah, got some serious zeros there.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, so, statistics.
I like my poster.
I know, I got one, too.
It's so much nicer to read than trying to, like, read it online.
Okay. So, um, Janet had a couple of questions, so I'm assuming that you all will have the same questions, so I did get an answer from Max, okay, so. Basically, what we were doing here is trying to close out last year's fiscal year with statistics. Because now with, with us having closed during the summer, moving to curbside, and starting or introducing digital or virtual programs, our statistics will change, and, and the kinds of things we're reporting are gonna change. And it was, it, it would be too muddied to kind of look at them at the same time, so it's just better to close out the year, and then, you know, I, I think I can probably get you the first quarter of this year. Maybe next month, what I, what I've asked the staff to do is to close out the year, and then give me uh, statistics during the closure, so maybe from March to September, I want to see different things. And then, more of a traditional first quarter for us, which is July, August, September. One of the challenges for statistics for us, which I'll just maybe remind you about, is we do report statistics to the state report, which is usually between January and March. And every library in the United States is dealing with the same thing, where, you know, everyone closed for some amount of time, and it's just, you know, 1920 is gonna be messy, 2021 is gonna be messy, just because our categories have to change. So just keep that in mind, so, um, let's see, some notes from Max about E other under digital circ, which is the second, you know, second horizontal block. E other is a catch-all format, hopefully. E other is a catch-all format hoopla uses when their items are not catalogued as a book, audio, film, et cetera. They removed it with their recent merge with the Midwest tape website. So this is the last year. We'll need to highlight this outlier. Okay. Then, um, all of our, in terms of what are the e, ebook platforms? Um, who's your actual question? What ebook platforms are counted? What is E other? Okay, so, um, all of our ebook platforms are counted. So it's Cloud Library, Overdrive, Hoopla, as well as Canopy. The breakdown of what is borrowed from all of these, including Hoopla, is in the second tab of the e-resource stat sheet labeled 1920 del notables, which I didn't send you. I can pull that up and send it. I was, I was, I mean, because I was focusing on the year, that's my, but I can either pull it up on the screen, share a screen or just send it. And we can talk about that next time. That's fine. Um, and then the question about, um, our, oh, I guess it was in the director's report, our fill rates for both borrowed and loaned ILLs continues to live around 90%. So that means that 10% of the requests we get from other libraries as well as the requests we get from our patrons for other libraries' items go unfilled. We are able to satisfy the needs of both our own patrons and other libraries approximately 90% of the time.
That's good.
Yeah. Okay, um. Oh, yes.
When you're in a place where I can just make a comment, let me know.
Go for it.
Go for it.
Okay, so. Events and activities total attending June 2,548. I'm imagining that's gotta be some of the Facebook storytime, which I actually think is pretty, pretty cool.
So the challenge with a Facebook event or, okay. So what we realized in pulling the numbers is you have two different kinds of numbers. You have synchronous, I'm watching it as it's going on, and asynchronous. I'll pull it up later. Um, and so these things are happening, which is really interesting because, um, you know, we talk about how everyone is kind of zoomed out and burnt out over Zoom. And when you're presenting programs, the asynchronous ones are the ones that are more likely viewed. Because you can do it on your own time. It's like streaming.
Yes.
TV, you know.
That's what I was thinking. I was thinking, you know, like a, a mom can't get to the library when Storytime is at 10 o'clock on Wednesday, but now I can watch it whenever I want to watch it.
Right. So, you know, when Kathy and Jenny and Ben, well, it's really, yeah, I mean, they're all, when they're all doing live events on either Instagram or Facebook, they can see the count as it's happening, but then the count changes when people see it later. You know, so that's just, you know, there's not a, there's not a column. There's not a column for that, but we still wanna, you know, tell the story that people are interacting with our content. You know, they're interacting with our original content. So here's what it looks like now. Probably the first quarter is gonna look different. I have no idea what the state report's gonna look like and how, uh, you know, Tim at the State Library is discussing with his colleagues around the United States what categories are gonna look like. So that's that. You know, meetings, the meeting room is closed. So that's, that's the obvious thing. Um.
Can I jump down to data, database usage?
Yes. Yep.
Well, I'm thinking that number probably went down because we were still in sort of switch mode. People weren't in the building accessing databases. They were figuring out how to do that in another capacity.
Well, you know, I have to say, the other thing that I've asked the staff to do is to put together stats, um, comparing, you know, you know, June 29, 2020 with June 2019 or like, you know, October 2020 with October 2019, you know, it's, it's. And, and we've been playing with a couple of, uh, you know, graphics to show you, but again, that's more the, you know, like the COVID March to September and then, and then 2020, 2021 where it's, you know, we want to see how we're doing and, you know, um, is, is that like, almost like a, a consistent percentage of, of what it was last year when we were just open, you know, are we tracking?
Am I looking at the same thing? Because Janice, I thought you just said the databases went down, but in April and May, it looks like database usage went through the roof.
Yeah, exactly. So I couldn't decide whether, I couldn't decide what that was about.
Well, I think if people were, were at home, right?
Right. It just, it went from such a high number to a markedly low number.
I'm just, what, what are you, are we looking at the same thing? I think we're looking at different things.
I'm looking at database usage, which is at the bottom.
And it says like for April, 73,625.
And then in June, it goes down to 17,013.
Well, the library also, it looks like we started circulating materials. People were coming out of their houses looking for.
Okay, I just.
Janet, you're muted.
And school was out. School was still in session in April and May.
Yeah.
Out in June.
Right, good, good point, good point.
I think I was also misinterpreting it just from my, my own self, the way I described it. I was misinterpreting it.
So, but if we looked at, uh, you know, June 2019 and May 2019 and April 2019, what it was, well, you know, the end of school and then summer starts in the middle or end of June, you know, would we see the same pattern? You know, do we have a high database use during the school year and then does it paper off or drop off in June? You know, and that's something to look at, you know, with statistics and I'm sure you guys, you know, you know this. It doesn't matter. You can collect any kind of number you want, but what are you comparing it to and how are you interpreting it? You know, so you have to compare it to something, you know. But it's, it's again, I always give you an annual, so we're, we're kind of looking at an annual. And, you know, now that it's complete, you know, um, I think there's a, there were some things that we didn't have, uh, we didn't collect because there were some staff changes. You know, I think the yellow, that was the note Joanne gave me, but, um, you know, now we can pull it out. You know, what I'm really interested is what's the story? What does this tell? You know, what does this say about the library during this time? You know, um, and I haven't done that yet. You know, I haven't put those things together or compared the things, you know. But that's, you know, this is finished. Now we can, you know, look back, what does it look like from, you know, compared to last year? And then what's the COVID period like and what's it like once we kind of opened our doors again at the end of September?
Thank you. Any other questions for Yvette? Okay, thank you, Yvette, and thank you for the big poster. It was a big hit.
Not me.
Um, thanks, Joanne. So we're on to the operating budget, October 2020 general ledger and invoice manifest. You probably saw that Joanne sent us something. Let me open mine up too. Let's see, Joanne sent a recap of October invoices, um, just a day or so ago.
I had no issues.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions or issues for Yvette? Yeah? Okay, moving on to the director's report.
Let's see, so, um, you have a gift to accept, to vote on and accept. We've received a donation from DCU in the amount of $5,000 in support of the library's efforts in providing programs and services that make a difference in the community.
Make a motion to accept the DCU donation of $5,000.
I'll second that. And I will vote yes to accept that. Karen?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Thank you. Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
Yes.
And as always, we are very grateful for DCU's continued support of the library and its programs. So we really appreciate that.
Um, and under personnel, there are three items. Susan McGowan submitted her letter of resignation. Um, her duties as a member of her school's board are increasing and she's committed to meeting those. Her last day of employment will be Thursday and you can vote to accept that.
I will make a motion that we vote to accept Susan's resignation with regret. Um, as we mentioned earlier, it's always been lovely seeing her in the library, so.
I'll second.
Thank you, Janet. Um, I vote in favor. Karen?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. That's okay. Okay. So that passes 5-0-0.
Uh, Megan Hamm submitted her leather, letter of resignation. She has other employment opportunities in her field of study. Uh, you'll remember that Megan, um, is more into art and she was originally rehired as a kind of temporary employee and, uh, now her last day of employment will be tomorrow.
So, um, I will make a motion that we accept Megan Hamm's letter, resignation rather, with regret. Again, another person who's always lovely to see in the library. So thank you, Janet, seconds. So I vote in favor of that to accept it. Karen?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and we've extended a conditional offer of employment to Brianna Beard for the part-time adult services position. Her first day of work was, uh, November 10th, start with training. Um, and the conditional offer is pending a clean background check and of course your approval, but.
Okay, make a motion to accept Brianna Beard's conditional offer of employment.
I second.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, I vote in favor. Karen?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Yvette.
Um, other things, you know, I don't know if you had any questions about any of these things on the, on the report. Just wanted to let you know in terms of the COVID reopening plan, um, our Saturdays have been very busy. So I was talking to the department heads about should we, you know, open more on Saturdays or, or have more staffing and right now they're gonna try with more staffing on Saturdays. And so, you know, I, I think I'm, I'm just trying to stay, you know, kind of keep an open mind, I think, with, with maybe what I thought the plan was, you know, that it was like, oh, we'll open evenings first and then add Sunday. But, um, I think it depends on, you know, really paying attention to how our patrons are using the library. And, um, they're really not coming in in the evening. Now it's getting darker and, and everything else. So, but if, if it's more convenient for people, um, to really use the library on Saturday, then, then I'll, I'm just gonna keep listening to what the staff is telling me and, you know, see if that's, that's a different direction in terms of a phased reopening. So it's just kind of out there to think about, let you know kind of what's going on.
Did you say something about Sundays also or did I mishear you?
Normally we would have opened Sundays after Labor Day and we aren't, um. So I, I just, I don't know when the appropriate time is to move to the next level yet, you know, the next. Um, we are going to begin passport acceptance facilities, um, in January. Eight of us are going to be certified or recertified, um, to be passport acceptance agents. And we've worked out a, I have to give credit to Max and Casey, um, probably Angela too. I'm not sure if she had any hand in this, but they found a, an online, um, appointment calendar that you can, you can get on and, um, make your appointment. It shows what the available times are. So each of us are going to say, this is my available slot, you know, and try to make it, you know, so, okay, we're gonna have some, some Saturdays available. We're gonna have, you know, these times during the day and, and kind of early evening. And, uh, and then when you register for the time slot, you get a notification, you get an email saying, hey, you've made this appointment. And then there's a reminder because I made a fake appointment for Saturday. And I got an email saying Max was expecting me at the library and he wasn't because I was just, you know, doing an available time. And, um, so it, it, that really seems to be the best, most streamlined way for us to do appointments. Last year when we were, when we were actively having this service, um, people would call a number. It was, you know, kind of RFA's purview and, um, she would have to do a callback and set the appointment and back and forth. And there was, there was a lot of like staff time involved. So, um, but we're, everyone's going through the certification training now. That has to be completed by the end of December. And then we have to, I have to submit the application packet, um, with the various, um, supporting materials, um, our proof of ID and, you know, things like that. So that's in process. We're, we're planning it. And then, you know, I think I forwarded you an email with, um, just to let you know that, um, in terms of our, uh, the town, um, you know, updating COVID procedures or employee status forms for, for COVID or travel plans, travel guidance. That is, um, I mean, I think I sent you something Friday. I have a change from Monday. So, um, it's, it's, they are very diligent, um, you know, in the town and notifying all employees about updates and guidelines and best practices and procedures. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that, that we're being diligent, they're being diligent, um, and we're keeping, we're keeping up with it. So there's a whole flow chart about what to do.
I just have a kind of a comment. Um, I know where my husband works. They, um, they're actually rolling back their procedures, um, like they're going back to travel bans. They're going back to, um, essentially as many people who can work from home, work from home. Has that been discussed at all with the possibility that the library might back off hours actually instead of adding hours?
Um, we haven't, as department heads, we haven't sat down to talk about that. You know, I think on, in my meetings as a director, when I'm on calls with all of, you know, many of the directors throughout the state or in my regular, you know, G-Milks and Urbans and Hillstown meetings, you know, the topic for weeks has been, uh, what's, what's the metrics for you to step back? Um, and so much of it is watching what is the local activity? You know, I talked to, I talked to the department heads and I said, okay, guys, holidays are coming up. Find out what your staff's plans are because if we have anyone who needs to quarantine after traveling out of New England, we need to plan for that. So, you know, I know what the movements or not are going to be for our staff. And we're thinking of it in terms of coverage. I, you know, what the other directors really are saying and, and it's, you know, we shut down. we shut down immediately if there's a staff who tests positive. You know, that's the non-negotiable. In terms of stepping back, you know, I know, you know, we're not necessarily watching the school or going along with any of our local schools. Some communities are, you know, I mean, right now, I don't think we need to step back, but, you know, again, I'm trying to keep an open mind with what information comes in, you know, and if there are any red flags, you know, I would certainly hear from the town first, you know, that, oh, okay, town buildings are shut. Okay, that's also the non-negotiable. We're shutting down. And we can very easily move to 100% virtual, you know, we can do that. But that's, you know, we're probably gonna have a meeting on Friday, department heads, to kind of kick it around. So.
Okay.
I would just want to put forward that if that does happen, that's just a consideration for the.
Can you?
Yeah. Why, nobody can hear me. I don't understand why. I'm like, that we just consider Curbside was a lovely service, right? So when we say full remote and virtual, let's not forget about good old Curbside. I think that was wonderful. You know, it was a nice phased approach in and out, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we step back, you know, to step back would be, no one in the, patrons not in the building. You know, we would step back to that, because that was our last step. No computers. We don't have outside seating anymore.
Right, right.
You know, yeah, we, Curbside, sure, you know, I think, you know, we've talked about, but not in depth. We had one conversation about, and it was more in the context of programming and accessibility. You know, like, I have a writers' group at 7:00 at night. Library's closed at 6:30. So unless you have access to a computer at your house or somewhere, then you cannot attend, you know. So the question is, oh, can we check out laptops for someone to use in their car in the parking lot? But then that means someone has to be in the building. I mean, you know, there's all these little things that you have to kind of think through if you wanna make sure someone has access to a program that's at 7:00. You know, so there's a lot of moving pieces. But, yeah, you know, I have to look at the latest updates from the town and see, okay, how are our phased plan, you know, what's the pivot back? What does that look like? Get feedback from people, you know. We have to have staff available to do these things, you know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Also, this isn't on your report, but I made a note of it as I was reading your report. So I apologize, I didn't ask you about it ahead of time, but the magnolia tree that Diana Si brought up, so there's a problem with an infestation in the magnolia tree. And she recommended we get an expert in to take a look at it. So I didn't know if you had anything on that, so.
I emailed Kyle at Public Works, and he said he thinks Lori knows someone. So I'm just waiting to hear back.
Okay, great. So just so you're all aware of that, the garden club noticed something in there that was not very healthy, and we want to get it taken care of the right way. So and the other thing was, the Quimby Trust is still out there, the question of that. There was some discussion about a misunderstanding or maybe miscommunication about how much money they thought we already had been given, that Mr. Upton thought. So Janet had replied to him, and I had not heard back anything from him. So I will put that as a note to myself to reach out to him, to ask where we're at with that particular question. So just to clarify, one of the things that Dr. Quimby would like us to do is to invest the money with a certain company. In order to do that, we have to have a certain amount of money. So we just need to make sure. And so there was some miscommunication about how much we already had moving forward. So we're just trying to clarify that. All right, that's all I have to add to what Yvette has already shared. Are there any questions for Yvette? Okay, thank you, Yvette. Let's see, next on our agenda, the treasurer's report. Okay. I'm on the balance sheet. And so for fines, for the month of October, we started with $8,813.82. And then we ended with $8,464.72. Any questions on fines? Okay. And then for special, we started the month with $18,230.46. And we ended with $16,271.48. I wanted to highlight in, on the balance sheet, that there is now a Quimby Memorial Savings Account. That is the money that got moved over from, this is just the move, all the money, including interest, that was from Dr. Quimby's first donation and from all the patrons who did in lieu of flowers. So that's that amount. And I also moved his second addition, the $10,000 that was in savings. I just, I did it after I made this balance sheet. So in that Quimby Memorial, actually, is $30,469.59, or the bottom one, So all the money that was Quimby, including the donations in lieu of flowers, as well as all the interest, is all in that one account. Everything is right there.
Thank you for organizing that.
Well, I just thought it'd be easier, and I wanted it under the Merrimack Public Library's accounts, so you could see it. So it's all there. It's all under the DCU, same number, same everything, so it's all there. And I think that's it. I don't think I had anything else to say. Yep. Thank you, Janet. Acceptance of minutes. I only have two in front of me. I hope I'm correct in that. If I've missed something, please let me know. Let's see, I have our public meeting minutes from October 20th and our non-public. So let's begin with the public meeting minutes. So public meeting minutes for October 20th, 2020. Any comments, questions, clarifications?
I didn't have anything.
Okay, Soheini, Karen. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the October 20th, 2020, public meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you, Janet. I'll vote in favor. Karen?
Yes.
Thank you, Soheini.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we have the minutes of our non-public session, October 20th, 2020. Any questions, comments, clarifications, corrections? I can't think of anything else that begins with that sound. Anything else? Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the October 20th, 2020, non-public session.
I'll second.
Thank you, Janet. I'll vote in favor. Karen?
Yes.
Thank you, Soheini?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you, Janice. We know that minutes are a difficult and cumbersome task, so thank you.
Welcome.
Okay.
I'll get those budget meeting minutes too.
We did a lot. So we're moving on to the committee updates. There's nothing for the Building Exploratory Committee. Friends at the Merrimack Public Library?
Virtual auction has begun, and that's from the 18th to the 24th of November.
And thank you to Janet and her sister for a wreath that was given from the trustees.
And the Friends' next meeting is November 30th. I believe it's the 30th.
Just double-check that.
Yeah, the 30th at 7:00. We Zoom.
And then the Merrimack Public Library Development Fund Committee has not met. But as I'm looking at this, I think I'm going to send an email to Bill Cummings and also to Victoria Agnew. Is she still the president of the Friends? Am I correct in that? And just let them know about, that we decided to work with an architect on doing some, you know, investigation of options, just to kind of keep them in the loop and let them know where we're at, because those would be the members of our Building Exploratory Committee. So I will send an email out to all of them, and I will CC you on it, just so you'll know what that is. Okay? All right, and then the Town Center Committee, anything for that, Karen?
I begged out of the last meeting, so I did get, I did get minutes. And I do, and the next meeting is going to be pretty shortly, so.
Great.
I kind of, I kind of, 12 to 1 on a Friday afternoon, every once in a while, something's gonna interfere.
Sure, no worries. Understood. Something should interfere. That should be, you should have a fun day once in a while, right? Thank you.
An interesting group. They probably would go for that.
Okay, great. Library Board of Trustees Committees, has the Personnel Committee met or do anything to report to us?
No.
Okay. Building and Maintenance, anything? No. Finance? No. So that was quick. The only other thing we sort of left hanging out there was the masks. I don't know if people are interested in taking action on that or thinking about it and revisiting it in December. I'm fine with either one, so. Any strong feelings on moving forward with the masks? Would you like RFA to get us a sample of what a mask would be like, the quality? We can't get the, perhaps can't get the logo on it, but we could just see what it would be like.
I feel like partly, at some point, we have to decide whether we are ordering a small amount or a larger amount, who's gonna get them. Maybe that's something we, I don't know, come back in December and be prepared to do.
So the prices are firm for 30 days. I'm just reading. So that would be the only thing that would possibly make us go, hmm. But I can't imagine that they would be too, it would differ too much, right? We could do it as a, starting off the new year, a healthy gift for people in 2021, something like that. You know, so, okay, so if it's okay with everyone, we'll think about that, think about how many people we would actually want to give them to. Can you ask Yvette if RFA, if they would send her a sample, just out of curiosity? And do we think blue, black, or gray? I think black. I think the blue and green will pop against that, but, you know.
Yeah, I think so.
For the logo.
Yep.
Any strong feelings about any other colors?
That sounds good.
Okay. And if she can't, she can't, but if they're willing to send her one, it'd be nice to see it and just get an idea of the quality. Okay, so we'll put that on our action items for December.
Can I add something? And Karen, you jump in if you think this isn't a good idea. I was thinking about Karen and I presenting to you some evaluation suggestions in December. I was curious, do people have any thoughts on what they actually, what they absolutely want to see on such an evaluation? Or any questions that would lead us in a certain direction? Feel free to email.
I personally don't want to see the scale kind of thing that we have right now, where I think that's too specific. And sometimes when we looked at the evaluation, we were asked to assess whether Yvette did things that we have no way of knowing, because we are not there actually following her around, you know. I mean, if she wants us to, we could, but like, I think it would be better if it wasn't that specific, you know. I think there were also things on the evaluation that by nature, the director delegates. So, you know, some of the things that director does this, well, director makes sure somebody else does this, but I don't know that, I don't know, I just, there were things that probably on that specific evaluation that we dealt with were not really applicable. I would hope that our evaluations can be more of a conversation that we're all trying to improve and move forward, and that if we had an issue with Yvette, that it would be something that would be addressed and not, we wouldn't wait till that day of the evaluation to bring it up, right? Because that doesn't do anybody any good. It's better to discuss things. So that's just sort of where I'm coming from. I want it to be a positive and looking forward experience, you know, reflecting on the year that's been, but how can we all improve and move forward with that? So I would love to see some, even if you could send them some, even ideas or things you see before the meeting, and maybe we could have a non-public at the end of our December meeting, if time allows. Now, hopefully, time will allow. We'll have a non-public, and we can have a discussion about those things. And I think a non-public is appropriate, so that if Yvette has concerns also about evaluations of the past, they can come up too. So. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if anybody thinks of anything else, just email Karen.
If you run across a sample and you think you might like us to see it, by all means, send it to us.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for taking that on, and I thank you for dealing with it in December, not waiting till a couple of weeks before the evaluation, which is, I think, what ended up happening last year, and then it didn't get very far. So, great. Thank you, Janice and Karen. Anything else? Yvette?
So I wanted to update you on the list of maintenance projects.
Oh, yeah.
Joanne had added furnace not working.
Yeah, I noticed that.
That was fixed. That was fixed this morning. I just wanted to let you know. So, you know, we have a regular vendor, Absolut Mechanical, that works on this system. And it was a broken fan, so they ordered the part. We got the part. It was installed this morning. I'm trying to look for Joanne's text, because I think she, I want to say she texted me with the price. And it's something like, you know, $1,200 or, you know, it's not something we can put off, and it's not something we can't do. So you'll see that bill probably on the next month's, in December, you'll see that on the general ledger. You'll. It's working. Okay.
There is some.
That is fixed. We're also gonna be meeting, maybe we're trying to meet with a vendor on Friday in the building to have a vendor demo an air purification unit. This is something that I might have mentioned at another meeting, but it's, you can put it in a room. I mentioned it during the budget discussion, where you can put it in like an office my size, and it'll purify the air, and, you know, it's kind of, you know, is this a good solution so that we can continue to open the building, you know, for longer periods of time and have people in the building for more than two hours? You know, we'll see. You know, the vendor's not getting back to. You know, we'll see if, you know, the vendor's not getting back to us, but it's, you know, again, always exploring what's the solution that we might be able to do, and maybe, maybe it's good, maybe it's not, I'll update you when I find out more, but uh maybe Friday, we'll see this.
Um, I I have a reminder for us, we put on an action item in the last couple of months to revisit our action items from our retreat. I don't know if we want to um put that on in December or because we had a lot.
I think we've been making some progress, Deb. Go ahead, Yvette.
Yeah, um Janet, can you send those to me if you have them, or tell me where I can find them? Um, because in terms of our um presentation to Town Council on Thursday, I made a note for you that, you know, do you want to talk about what the trustee goals are, and I don't know what the trustee goals are, so you know, because what the Town Council wants to know, usually we go and we say, here's what happened this year. I got an email from Becky that said, just tell us the future, tell us what's happening in the future, what's, what's the state of the library? That's a little bit harder to talk about, because we.
I think that, I mean, for me, it's um continuing to provide excellent services to the community.
Right.
Um, trying to keep the building opening and functioning in the safest manner possible, for everybody included. Um, taking a methodical and um thorough approach to what's the future of this building using, you know, an architect who's well-respected and used by the town, you know, those sorts of things, that, I mean, I, if anybody has anything else that comes to mind, I feel like that's more something they're going to care about than the stuff that we are, like, we have our stuff, right? But how is it going to impact, you, can you hear my dog, like, he's dreaming in the background here? So, um, but I, you know, I, that's what my focus would be, is how what we're doing is supporting the library and how it's going to affect you as a person in town, but if people have specific things they think I should mention, I'm happy to do that, just let me know, so. Short but sweet, right, we're just going to do.
Supposed to be short but sweet and.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, Yvette, did you ask me to forward something to you?
Uh, well, I guess not, the trustee goal.
I was going to say I don't think you would, you you wouldn't hear what Deb just said in the, in the document from the minutes. You did a beautiful job just saying it just now.
I just want to make sure, we, I always put together talking points, you know, just to stay on track and not forget stuff, so I'm probably going to focus on um the services and all the, you know, the library things, and, you know, kind of the things that you know about already, that uh we're trying to be flexible, we're trying to be able to move forward, flex back if we have to, um, continue the virtual and the curbside stuff while we continue to open. Um, I I think the other things that I don't want to not say, you know, I definitely want to mention that I think COVID has kind of revealed a lot of other things that we need to talk about as us, as a community, and the library is the perfect place to have those conversations and promote those conversations, education, you know, all the things we're talking about, about anti-racism, you know, um it's a goal for us, it's not, it's not specific, or we don't really know what it is, but it's definitely on the radar, um and I'd like to set a goal um for next year to uh to talk about the strategic plan, um, that's a conversation to have with you guys first. Um, and then kind of, uh I have a suggestion of how we want to approach that, but that should go back on the to-do list, because it should have happened last year and it couldn't. You know, you can't have focus groups when no one wants to be in the same room, so, but I think there's ways we can do this virtually and 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 definitely it's, we, it's time, our, we have to do it, it's our time.
I think we'll be fine. I'll look at the document tomorrow, um if I have any questions, I'll let you know, but I'm not worried about it, it'll be good.
Okay, I'll trust you, because I'm still, you know, trying to get my head around it and.
Oh, you usually do a fabulous job.
Yeah.
About the past and what happened, and our goals are very broad and and it's hard for I am not thinking about the future, I stopped thinking about the future when it was, we might be closed for eighteen months. We might not be back up to normal operations for eighteen months to two years, that was the first thing we were talking about in March. So, I want to, I want to make sure that we're flexible, and I know that I tend to talk up here about this stuff and nobody cares.
I I think that one, I understand why they, that they don't want to hear about the past, but I do think that saying something like you know, we knew things were going to be different and opening and going forward, so we put a lot of effort into changing things in the library to create a very safe environment, to still have it, you know, appealing physically and visually, but make it safe where patrons, you know, know that we are taking it, and our staff feel that way too, I think you can address something like that, because that should be acknowledged. It looks really good, you know, it it doesn't feel like some places you go into and you're like, oh, that feels like, I don't know, it just doesn't look right, this looks fine, this is nice, when you come in, you still feel like you're in the library, it's still very welcoming, that's really important, so.
Well, you can edit all my nonsense.
I will, yeah, I'll just jump in, so it will be fun, I'm not worried, so. Okay, great, is there anything else? No, okay, I'm going to mention our upcoming events, there's the Friends the Libraries Reed Virtual Auction um November eighteenth through the twenty-fourth via Facebook. The library has an appointment with Town Council tomorrow, November nineteenth at seven PM. The Friends of the Library Board will meet again on November thirtieth, twenty twenty at seven. The Library Board of Trustees will meet again on, I'm sorry, not February, we wouldn't want to go that long, on December fifteenth, seven PM. And there's no date set for the next NPL Development Fund Committee meeting. I did not mention our November action items, so just to backtrack quickly and do those. Um, I will, for me, I will be reaching out to the Town Attorney to see what the status is of the Quimby um Trust, I will also be emailing the Friends and the President of the Friends and the Chair of the Merrimack Public Library Development Fund to keep them posted on what's going on with the um architect that we have hired to start reviewing site options, so. And building needs and all that good stuff, so, those are my two things that came to mind, we are going to look at the masks again. I was going to say, somebody needs to purchase the gift cards for the staff, so.
Cards for the staff, yeah.
Karen and Janet can fight over that task, and Yvette, what did you want to say?
The Buckley's.
Oh, awesome, okay.
You also were going to contact the other Town Attorney about.
Yes, thank you, you know, I wrote Town Attorney twice in here, but then it gets lost, so I'm going to put up with the employment Town Attorney. Thank you.
And then I'll get from Yvette how much of each of the other ones that she needs or wants. And I'll get those, because the twenty-five dollar one is the one that's going to be their choice. But the Buck, the Buckley's is going to take a while, because I, I don't know, last I saw, they still wrote them by hand.
When I bought them last time, I called ahead, I told them what I wanted, um, told them how many, gave them my credit card, and then when I got there, they had them in a bag for me with a receipt attached, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, because I was, I wasn't sure if they want me to do curbside, but I figured it was like eighteen or something at the time, and I just thought it'd be better to let them know in advance, so.
Good idea.
Okay. Yvette, I have a question, um, and I asked Deb this, the, when the Town Attorney does stuff for us regarding the Quimby Trust, are are we paying for that?
I don't know, because I, I, whenever I've emailed Matt, then I've always said, make sure you charge us. And then there was a phone call where he was like, oh, this is my, you know, service or something, so I I would always recommend just saying, oh, just make sure, you know, you charge this um your, for your time, and if he opts to not, then he opts to not, but I would just remind him, because that's, you know, I'm assuming we're getting charged, but um I don't know.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I think just to, just to cover ourselves. Um I I had a different, different question, which I don't know if you guys really care, but I have been looking for.
Time to get us done by nine o'clock, so if you could go.
I'll make the decision and.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, please.
I've been looking for mailboxes for you all, for all of the three boards committees, you know, Friends, Trustees and Development Fund Committees, Communication mailboxes, I did find actual mailbox. Um, I don't want to put a file cabinet in, because that's, uh, takes up square footage, and that's, you know, everyone's going to bang their leg on it, including me. Um, and uh I found the kind of open folder thing that sometimes you see in a doctor's office, joined in like that, because it doesn't lock, but I did find at Lowe's um mailboxes that are maybe between thirty and forty, high mid forty dollars that are lockable, so I'm going to talk to Jared and see what he thinks about these things, and if he thinks he can install them in the library, um I'm going to get you guys your mailboxes, so it's on my to-do list, I don't want you to think that I'm like not doing your mailboxes and replacing your drawer, but um it's hard to find what I have in my mind. Um, but could be an early Christmas present.
Why, thank you. Put a bow on top.
I could do the bow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Or anything else? Okay, that's it, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight forty-six.
A second.
Oh. Soheeney seconded, so. In favor, Karen?
Yep.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Janice?
Yes.
Okay, I think it's a record, I think we might, this might be a record under nine, and I, I feel like we're moving through our meetings and we're getting things done, and I appreciate all of your hard work and all of the time and energy that went into the budget as well, so thanks to everyone, I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving, whatever that looks like for you this year, and that you all stay healthy until we talk again, so.
And to everyone else as well.
Thank you, right, nice to see you all, okay, good night, thank you.
Night.